Roll.
Brent Casun?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Jean-François?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council?
Eileen, do we have? No one at this time.
Okay. Remarks of the mayor, is the mayor our line?
He was not.
Okay. Reports of department heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. Just want to update you on the renovations of eight dash ten Mulberry Street for the warming station. We did get our bids in a couple of weeks ago and we got one bid and it was rejected on the spot. It was way over budget. So, we're going to Plan B. We're rebidding the job, but this time we're segmenting them, individual bids, and they're going out tomorrow. So, for instance, there's going to be a general contractors can bid, acoustical ceiling-type contractors, flooring, interior and exterior doors. So, the bids are going to be published tomorrow and we're hoping that this might hopefully work and get us some more bidders and they'll be due February 25th. You could call the office, my office, or go online to request the big bid package. And last week, we had a new business open up in downtown, Fairly Fit Nutrition. We had a ribbon cutting, the city and the bid did a ribbon cutting for them and it's exciting to see a new business opening up during these times and go check it out and pretty good product and I know she was also busy all weekend long, she told me. So, we're happy to have her join Middletown. So, that's all I have for tonight, if anyone.
Aldman Johnson?
A quick question, I see Activity to Paramount, what's the status of that project?
We finished the sound system. Now, the facade is being done. They started painting, but then the cold weather set in and the snow, obviously. Doors are on order, the doors should be coming soon and then the windows are all going to be replaced. And hopefully with the, if we get a break in the weather at some point, then it's all going to be completed. So, it's on its way and, you know, I would anticipate March, early April will be all completed.
That sounds great, congratulations.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. Can you hear me okay with this box, with this enclosure? Council President, can you hear me? All right, this is-
Find out what camera is on.
This is the council president idea to put us inside the cage, all the speakers in there, so we will not be infecting you guys with anything. But hopefully you can hear us sincere. So, good evening, all, and report to you, obviously, with the snowstorms, you can see them, you can feel them. We urge the public to just keep your sidewalks shoveled, please, and do not throw the snow back on the street. I know it's tough, we have too much snow in there, but try the best you can to keep it on your yard, the front yard, side yard, whatever, but don't throw it back on the street, please. We've been out, code enforcement has been out shoveling our own sidewalks, city-owned sidewalks, and people who are, have not shoveled their sidewalk. And we've been focusing on the commercial areas in there. We issued about 177 tickets, not tickets, warning letters to people, remind them that if you do not shovel your sidewalk, we're going to come and shovel it and charge you for it and so on. So, please help us out, work with us, because we don't have the personnel. We have the water and sewer department between water main breaks, they're helping the street department in the plowing, parks and wrecks is helping, everybody's trying to help. We have people out in COVID. So, help us out, please, by cooperating and to keep the city safe and the streets, sidewalks passable. We had a big opening for New York Rising last Thursday. The two bids came in, one for West Main, culvert replacement and which is by the entrance, by the city line almost, by Maple Hill Park, and then Grand Street culvert replacement, the one we've been talking about for a long time. The bids were favorable, two different bidders, one each project, I think it's going to end up going. And hopefully by the end of the week, we'll make a decision with New York Rising and the consultant and we'll make a recommendation for you guys to award the bid to one or two bidders and proceed for signing the contract. Again, that's a three and a half million dollar grant from New York Rising, from the governor's office. Before you tonight, also, there's a request for resolution to approve, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with DOT for funding the ADA curbs on sidewalks project that has been going on in here and now it's a matter of getting reimbursement. As you know, the value of the project is 4.37 million dollars and we are responsible for about 20% of it, which is about 800, $870,000. So, that's before you tonight, so I would request that you approve that so that the mayor can proceed with signing it and sending it over to DOT. I think it's first or second, I think it's the first resolution on the agenda. Also, I'd like to thank the mayor very much for reappointing Brian Smith as deputy commissioner and Mark Pangle as deputy commissioner as well. And I want to thank you, I don't want to be presumptuous, but I would like to, I would like to thank you guys-
Evil eye, evil eye gets you.
-for supporting the mayor's appointment and then without me being presumptuous, you know, I urge you to support it. But these guys have been working very hard for us, both of them, and I'm very proud to have them next to me as deputy commissioners. I rely on them a lot and they are working very hard for us and for the city. And with that, I will conclude my remarks.
Aldman Green?
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner, can you just comment on someone who has like a corner lot with sidewalks? If it's important for them to shovel out to the street so people can cross, is that, is that on, that's on the homeowner, correct?
Yes, you got it.
Okay. Yeah, I've had a few calls about that, if you know they have a corner and they don't shovel out through the street, it almost defeats the purpose.
Exactly, especially for the handicap person or somebody who are disabled or semi-disabled. They need really this break, they can't climb over, absolutely, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Aldman Massey?
Commissioner, I'd like to go back over on the removal of the snow. You send out a letter?
Yes.
Two or three days?
Five.
Five days?
Yeah. It's on our code.
Okay. It may be something we have to look at because I do a lot of walking and I know I came into your office and we spoke the other day. The upper end of North Street, I walk and I had to walk in the middle of the street because neither side, many lots were not, I'm not going to say all, there were some, there were several that were. Wickham Avenue, the same thing. And given five days with no penalty, I think maybe something I'd like to look at. And if they are a repeat, I certainly, is there anything, if say my, my particular street, I don't do it, five day, you send me a letter, on the fifth day, I decide to shovel. Unfortunately, like we've had in the last week, multiple storms. The next storm comes by, I don't do it, you send me another letter, I wait, okay, three days. I would like to look into if the other, the other members of the council, because I don't know about you, but it's terrible when you have to walk out in the middle of the street or not even in the middle, on the side of the street with the cars coming by. And I see people repeatedly not doing it, not shoveling, and I just think we're giving them too much leeway.
That's, that's a good point. You know, I'm, you know, I'm for having like some kind of a repeat offender type list. I am in support of that, repeat offender.
We, we do have it, we did it because of CVS on East Main Street. We added stricter fines and everything.
We jacked up the prices. Like yesterday, we did this Fulton Plaza in here, which is Fulton and, Fulton and Canal Street.
And that's one of the ones I walk up and down.
Yeah, we just, we just did it. After we sent the five-day letter in there, we just did it yesterday, I think, in there. The charge is $500. You know, that's a lot of money. And remember, we used to do it for CVS and all that stuff, they said, okay, we were very cheap, we jacked up all our prices.
But Jacob, a question again, I don't mean to interrupt, but when do we send out the letter? When I or a code enforcement or one of the other council people happen to see it? It may be the third or fourth day after that. We send the letter, it takes two days for them to get the letter, we give them five days, for crying out loud, the sun will melt it after a while.
That's exactly, that's exactly what happens is you're responsible 24 hours after the snow event to shovel your sidewalk. So, what happens is 24 hours in there, we give them the 24 hours, then we send our code enforcement officers, we don't wait for you to call or anybody else, we send our code enforcement officers at the four different wards. Each code enforcement gets a ward in there. We take pictures and we send letters. Once we go clean it up in there, we take pictures and we send the bill over because many, many people, they come and challenge us. They said, no, no, I cleaned it, it wasn't you and all that stuff. So, we show pictures and all that stuff. So, that's what, that's what we do. It's not, but we also get referrals, absolutely. Today, I got referrals from several streets. Some of them were already on our list, some of them were not. So, but that's why the five days comes from in there. Once it happens in there, we send the letter out, it takes a couple of days to get, for you to get the letter. If we make it like two days, might as well not even send the letter because you're not going to get it.
Thank you.
Aldman Johnson?
Not to get into a prolonged discussion, but I understand it's a public safety issue, I get that. I also understand for a commercial property owner, there's a cost of doing business to get the snow removed. As far as residential, there's lots of stories. You know, what if it's a geriatric couple? In the old days, kids walked around and shoveled your driveway for five bucks. I don't know if kids do that anymore.
Ex-boxing police station now.
It's not always negligence or defiance, sometimes it's inability to get somebody to come and do it. And then you go down on that person and say, okay, well, in five days, I'm going to send you a bill for 150 bucks to shovel your driveway. So, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing, I'm just saying this is a multifaceted conversation.
Well, here in a couple of months, we'll be complaining about our neighbors not cutting our grass and we're going to ask for private landscapers to come on their property and mow their grass. I'm one of them because I hate when my neighbors don't cut their grass. Here's the same thing, we could probably put in committee and Aldman Jean-François can look at, we can't. When there's 24 inches of snow, we cannot send our DPW guys to every sidewalk, even in violation, seven days after and violate them. We're lucky that the schools are not running full swing because every school, every sidewalk, you'd be walking on the street. So, I think we need to put in committee to look at and assigning, if it's, you want to do three days, or we have our attorney back there. The 24 hours, after you see it, your 24 hours, then we can violate them and send the landscaper out and do their driveway. We pay their bill and we hit the homeowner with their, with that bill, plain and simple. They should know, they live in that area where a sidewalk needs to get done. There's any, you know, I can understand if there's a situation where somebody can't do it, but everyone's responsible. They have to have their sidewalk cleared 24 hours after a storm, so that's enough time. Or, or, or we need to violate them. Five days, weekends and all this doesn't count, doesn't help. And your men were out there 41 hours straight and they can't be saying, all right, now go do Fulton Plaza and CVS and, you know, Rite Aid. Well, when we put Dawson Avenue, we're going to put sidewalks on Dawson Avenue, that's going to be another thing. If you drive down 211, nobody does 211 sidewalks, they're all, all full of snow. This, this evening, all against Fort Knox, it was three feet of snow against that sidewalk. And that's in downtown. So, we need to make sure and we'll put it in committee, let's please, landscaper for grass in a couple of months and now for the snow and let's pass something. If our attorney can work very hard and fast to work about retail prices, work from home, he can definitely pass a law to find somebody.
Them fighting words.
Maybe we should allow, we should prohibit retail businesses except selling snow shovels.
There you go. Jacob, one more thing, I have a question. Wolf Slayer Field, I know it's full of snow now, is there any timeline, timeline, anything going?
Yeah, the contractor, the contractor is concerned about the fill material that is there and he's worried about cracking in his, in his work and there, whether it is the field itself or the track, he's worried about it. So, the architect of, on the project, they hired a geotechnical engineer and they're going to do soil borings, hopefully next week, we're going to be doing that to see what kind of fill there is. I thought it was very clear for everybody that we had this whole, this whole field is built on 10-foot of fill material and I thought that was clear, but it appears that the contractor did not know about it. So, we're going to do this and probably the solution will be putting some kind of geo, geo, geofabric in there under, under the subgrade, whatever we're going to end up doing, and that will reinforce the soil and then we can tamp it. And we may have to do some kind of release for the contractor if there's any, any kind of cracking, premature cracking in there because of the settlement or because of the soil under it. So, that's something we're working on right now. And the mayor, he just signed a change order today, to be honest with you, but the weather is not very conducive to them doing it, but next week, I think they're going to try to do the soil borings and the geotechnical investigation and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Fire chief? Any question for the fire chief? Thank you, fire chief. City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Corporation counsel?
I ought to bring you up to date with what's happening with city court. As you know, city court was closed for a few months. Then it opened, it was about mid-September, early October with a real backlog. We were actually having court three days a week back then. Most of the backlog got worked out. However, in December, the court system ordered all of the courts to go back to virtual. Some of them had not been there, I say go back, but city court went seriously virtual. It is, it's a, it's a slow process, it's, it's, it takes time. The judges don't want to have hearings or trials, I can't blame them for that because it's difficult to even just communicate sometimes using Zoom. People are on phones, it's, it's, it's not the best of situations. So, the latest idea has been, at least on traffic, I'm not talking about codes, but for traffic, we're going to try to do things by mail. So, starting a couple of weeks ago, I sent out, I think it was over 100 letters, which basically constituted plea bargaining offer, offers to people who were charged with various traffic offenses. By mail, I made them offers and gave them instructions on how to fill it out. So, we are waiting to see how well that works. We're back down to now to two days a week. It's too early to tell if it's working well, we've had, many people have pled guilty by mail, other courts have done it. I can't tell you how many, it's not going to work for, we started to get some letters that are undeliverable, we've gotten phone calls, how do I do this, how do I do that? I know that in some other courts, they basically say, don't call us with any questions, nobody's going to answer you because the flow would be too heavy. So, it's a little bit too early, but we are, we are trying it out and, because we don't know how long it's going to be before the courts can get back into business, especially not with something like traffic and codes where you're talking about packing a courtroom, even one as big as Middletown, with an awful lot of people. So, that's, that's, that's where we are right now with that. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to.
Any question for Alex?
Thank you, Alex. Okay. Remarks of Aldman, Aldman Massey? Excuse me, just a couple of things. One, please be safe out there with this snow and everything and if you get an opportunity, please shovel your sidewalks, make it clear for people, especially, and I'm going to be careful when I say this because I know the mayor's probably listening, he's going to laugh, the elderly people that are trying to navigate. And one last thing, Chief Barber, I would like to, and I'm sure the council would like to congratulate you on your son's appointment. If, in case you didn't, anyone here doesn't know, that Nick's son, Trevor, was selected, was hired as a paid firefighter and let me be very clear, Nick had nothing to do with it. It came from a civil service test, a civil service list, and he was interviewed by the mayor and the other chiefs. Nick was not a participant in it, but congratulations to your son and to your family and to you, the chief.
Aldman Tobin? Nothing this evening. Aldman Green?
Thank you, I'll just echo the sidewalk shoveling, it's really important. We hear a lot about it from our neighbors and our constituents and, you know, shovel out to the street, through to the street, not into the street, let me be, be clear on that. And, you know, sometimes you see people using snow blowers and blowing it into the street, don't do that either. You know, it really makes the situation worse and our DPW and all other departments are working so hard during this to keep the streets safe and they're doing a phenomenal job. So, you know, kudos to everyone working to keep us all working and everyone just be safe and, you know, more snow is coming, so just be ready and we'll see you next, next week.
Aldman Johnson?
Thank you. I'm just going to take a moment to offer two COVID updates for animals because people keep talking about that and COVID is obviously still in the news. People still want to know, can my animal get it from me or give it to me or give it to somebody else? There's still the occasional tiger that's showing up in the news at various zoos, but as far as domestic pets, it's not really thought to be a problem. However, the current, and I emphasize the word current because as you know with COVID, everything is momentary. The current recommendation is if you are infected with COVID, you should treat your household pet like any other member of the family with respect to distancing and protecting the pet as a carrier. You never know where COVID will go. I had on my newsfeed today, some of you may know, I did not know that Denmark is the largest producer of fur in the United States, in the world for mink. And some of those mink tested positive for COVID and there was a concern in the country that they might carry the mutant virus form. And as a result of that last month, they euthanized 17 million mink in Denmark and they compensated the farmers $3 billion for their loss. So, you never know where COVID will take you or how seriously the country will take it, I thought that was pretty dramatic.
Did he work, did he work from home?
It was a home industry as well, yes, so Mr. Smith was right on-
$3 billion, Alex.
Thank you.
Aldman Casun?
And now's a good time to hit record on your DVR because I agree with Aldman Massey about, that's right, people, that, the shoveling thing, you have to do it. I live across the street from a bus stop, these kids are going down to the bus, they're in the road, they're in the road by an intersection, my road, street's relatively busy and the road's already narrower from the snow being in the street and the plowed snow. I almost hit a gentleman last night picking my daughter up from swim because he was just walking in the dark in the middle of the road and barely saw him and I got to figure out how to navigate. There's just not wide enough right now to have two cars passing, pedestrians in the street. So, you're, that's your responsibility as a property owner in Middletown, is you need to maintain your sidewalk and it's for the safety of everyone, the drivers, pedestrians, all of us. And also, if you have a hydrant near your home, please, God, uncover it because if there is a fire and they have to shovel that thing out of plowed snow, we're going to lose homes. So, if you live near one, that is also, I hope you believe your responsibility that you will shovel out that hydrant. And that's all I have for that. In the fire service vein, congratulations, Chief Barber, I guess service just runs in the family. So, welcome to your son and that's all I have tonight, stay safe.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. I just want to begin by thanking all the people who are volunteering for our different boards tonight. We have a whole list of people and I think we're going to do them all one at a time, but serving on these boards and most of them, almost all of them are unpaid positions, so we really do appreciate it, they do keep the city going. Sidewalks, you know, if you're going to be walking in the street at night, try not to wear all black or dark brown and with your head down. The same thing, just coming down here tonight, there's someone walking out in the street and you see them at the last second because nothing visible on them. So, wear something light or carry a flashlight or do something and, you know, if you're that unaware, you're probably not listening to the city council meeting, so. But, but if you see somebody, tell them, just, just kind of slow down and let them know, we can't see you.
Good point.
Thank you.
Aldman Jean-François?
Yes, good evening, thank you. First, I'd like to thank everyone for their support and their prayer in my, in my brother's passing. And speaking of snow, we all know so far this year, we had one of the biggest snowstorm. There's still more to come, but I got to thank the street department, these guys did a phenomenal job. I mean, I could hear the plow truck from Sunday evening till Monday afternoon, they were out there very aggressively to clean out the street. So, I want to thank Commissioner of DPW and the street department personally for doing a great job. Thank you.
Aldman Burr?
Nothing this evening.
New business? Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state Marshionelli program aid eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Green, any discussion? Roll. Brent Casun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, to concur with the mayor's reappointment of William Hungabueller to the Board of Assessment Review, term to expire September 30th, 2025. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Jean-François, any discussion? Roll. Brent Casun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
No.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green, to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Dan Higby to the planning board, term to expire 12/31/2027. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green, seconded by Aldman Tobin, any discussion? Roll. Brent Casun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Valerio Bruni to the plumbing board, term to expire on 12/31/2021. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Casun, any discussion? Roll. Brent Casun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Brent Casun, to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Dean Coleman to the Middletown Housing Authority, term to expire on 12/31/2023. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Brent Casun, seconded by Aldman Green, any discussion? Roll. Brent Casun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Greg Cortez to the Middletown Housing Authority, term to expire on 12/31/2022.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?